No, it's not.
All right.
For the record, no, it's not.
Hey, Bill, can you sit between those two in the back, please?
No.
No, unsweetened tea.
Ready? Perfect. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for those of you online that are joining us. Apologize for the slight tardiness, but we are here, ready to go. Thank you for those of us that are joining in person as well as students. Today is Tuesday, January 7, 2025. It is now 5:41. Mr. Hill, may we get a roll call?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. King?
Here.
Ms. Lee? Mrs. Shelby?
Here.
Perfect. We can go right into the organizational meeting. The 2025 organizational meeting of the South Yucatan County School District is called to order at 5:41 PM. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 331314 of the Ohio Revised Code. We will go right into roll call.
Here, do that.
May we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for that. We can go right into the organization for the Board of 2025. Nominations for Board President?
I nominate Cassandra Jones for Board President.
That's you.
May we get a second?
Second.
May we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you all for that. Uh, we can go right into the election of the president?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Yes or no?
Oh, yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Shelby?
Yes.
Can we go right into the oath, Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ken Dollar.
Lady very high, repeat after me. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as President of the Board of Education of the South Yucatan City School District, Haverford County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during the continuance in said office until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Um, I'll sign this, and I'll say, thank you.
Speech to my speech.
I do thank, uh, my fellow board members for believing in me. A lot of times when I don't believe in myself, let me just be real. I thank you guys for supporting me. Sometimes when I don't support myself. Um, I appreciate the work we do here. I appreciate the collaboration we have here, and, um, I'm just looking to keep doing what we're doing. I enjoy doing this work. I do learn from you all. Um, it seems like a big title, but I don't feel like I do much. I really don't. I think I'm just humble when it comes to this point. But I do appreciate the work and the trust that this administration has in myself and us as a whole. So I thank you again for allowing me to continue serving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nominations for Board Vice President?
I nominate Krista Shelby.
There are no other nominations open before? You can fold nominations. May we get a motion to approve that nomination?
So moved.
Second? And we?
Let's see here. Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
And we can go right into the...
Do the election. I know it seems redundant, but it's normally if you have multiples, that's why you do it that way.
Oh, right. Makes sense.
Uh, Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye. Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Shelby?
Yes.
Lady very high. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as Vice President of the Board of Education in the South Yucatan City School District, Haverford County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do. Um, I'm really excited. Um, I loved the first year of being on the board, and I'm just ready to dive deeper into this and make an impact on a different level, so thank you for your confidence, and let's do this.
Yeah.
Item three, the board meeting schedule. The South Yucatan Board of Education approves the proposed 2025 regular and special board meetings of the 2026 organizational meeting and the January 2026 regular meeting as reflected in the attached appendix. Did everybody get a chance to look over those things?
Yes.
Everything seemed pretty good to me as well.
And that includes the change to six o'clock, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
May we get a motion to approve item 3.1?
So moved.
Second?
Mrs. King, Ms. Falkenberg. Any questions or comments? While we're talking about meeting schedule, I don't know if you noticed that they took Capitol Conference away from Veterans Day week for next year?
Oh.
They did. So they have it running the Sunday after Veterans Day. I had to put it on the calendar.
Oh, I didn't.
So I just...
So Veterans Day is the 11th. They have Capitol Conference November 16, 17, and 18.
Okay.
So we have it the 18th, though. We'll be back. I mean, that's the evening that we all come back, right?
That evening.
Okay.
So I thought that was significant. Usually it runs right into that holiday.
Yes.
So they did change that.
Okay.
So, um, hearing no other questions or comments, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item four, item four, general business. Service fund.
Do you want to work through these?
You want to?
Okay. Uh, recommend for approval, item 4.1, the service fund. Item 4.2, this is my annual resolution, treasurer's resolution. Uh, item 4.3, the authorization for purchasing and contract signing. Item 4.4, authorization for payment of bills. Item 4.5, the authorization to invest funds. Item 4.6, the authorization for the superintendent to hire between board meetings. Item 4.7, the authorization for the superintendent to accept resignations. Item 4.8, stipends. Item 4.9, the authorization for overnight field trips related to OHSAA contests and tournaments. Item 410, OSBA membership agreement. Item 411, special education placements. And then item 412, approval of general business items as presented.
May we get a motion to approve items 4.1 through 4.11?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Shelby, Mrs. King. Any questions or comments?
And just for the record, these are, a lot of these are giving me and Don the authority in between meetings to continue doing business as, as normal in between, um, so we're not waiting for a board approval on that next thing. Um, and then just other annual authorizations that we might, um, need to do in between. And then the only other one is the OSBA membership agreement, the annuals.
And, and also as a point of clarity, Mr. Hill, these are things that are annual even though we realize that we have those two different calendar years.
Yes. Yeah, the authorizations tie to, tied to the calendar year always. That's why they're done at the organizational meeting.
Perfect. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Item five, liaison appointments. Every year, the South Yucatan Board of Education appoints two liaisons. We have a legislative liaison and a student achievement liaison as one of the board members taking on that, um, liaison role. So do we have a motion to appoint the legislative liaison?
I nominate myself.
I was gonna nominate her, but yeah. May I nominate?
I didn't want anyone else to take it.
Ashley King. I know, because everyone's fighting over this, um, to be the legislative, uh, representative, or liaison.
Nominate Ashley. And...
And I'd like to nominate Catherine as the student achievement liaison.
Thank you.
And nominate two for student achievement. All right. May we get a motion to approve those nominations, Mr. Hill?
So we do it?
Second.
These are more appointments, so you don't necessarily need to do nomination and go through all that. It can just be, this is collectively as who we're gonna appoint, and then you just do a roll call.
Okay.
We can go with a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Item six, legal counsel.
Recommend for approval, item 6.1, board legal counsel. And item 6.2, legal counsel for the board revision hearings. Item 6.3 is asking for approval for both item 6.1 and 6.2.
May we get a motion to approve 6.1 and 6.2?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Again, same situation. This is, 6.1 is giving us the authority as, uh, to seek counsel, um, in any means that we need to represent us. Uh, item 6.2 is specifically for my office to work with, uh, we've worked with Brinsom, McIntyre, and Seed for the last couple of years, continue working with them. They're the ones that represent us down at the county when there's ever a, uh, revision hearing for values. Home values. Well, not necessarily home values, business values, because we don't normally, we don't normally fight when it's the home piece of it.
Perfect. Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Hill. May we get a roll call?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Item seven, minimum wage and mileage rate. South Yucatan Board of Education hereby authorized the treasurer to pay the state of Ohio minimum wage to those individuals that are paid under the minimum wage provision. I believe it says Ohio minimum wage was increased from 10.45 per hour to 10.70 per hour effective January 1, 2025. And that action will allow that increase. Item 7.2 is the authorization to pay the standard mileage rate. This action will allow us to pay the current mileage rate to employees that are reimbursed for mileage. The IRS mileage rate was increased from 67 cents per mile driven to 70 cents per mile driven effective January 1, 2025. And may we get a motion to approve items 7.1 and 7.2?
So moved.
Second.
And Shelby, Mrs. King. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Section eight, substitute rates. 8.1 is the authorization to pay substitute rates. South Yucatan Board of Education authorizes the treasurer to pay the following substitute rates. They are included if someone is listed on their looking for rates.
They're listed on there. They're listed on there. That's not even attached, but they're actually on the minutes.
May we get a motion to approve item 8.1?
So moved.
Second.
And Mrs. King? Any questions or comments?
The new rates go in effect the first of the year?
Yes. Actually, if we've had anybody who's subbed up until this point, we hold them until these are officially approved, and then we will pay them out.
Okay.
And the other, just to give you some background on these, a lot of the things that will determine this is how the contracts are negotiated, so, uh, these are typically in line with, um, we don't want a sub necessarily making more than the actual person in that position. So we try to keep it, if one moves up quite a bit, that's why these were adjusted.
Thank you for that explanation. Hearing no further questions or comments, may we give a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
No, no, he's got, oh, he's got this one.
You can have mine if you want.
Go ahead, all yours.
That's, that's the one that's gotta be you.
So, I was gonna do this in my superintendent report, uh, but nine is, um, board, board member recognition month, and just wanted to take this opportunity, uh, briefly here to say thank you. Your leadership, commitment, and vision have made incredible impact on our district. Um, you have one of the most thankless jobs out there. Uh, you continue to lead from the front, embrace challenges, you advocate for our students. Um, you trust me and our team to carry out the shared vision, um, that we've created. Your presence and support at our events, see you, see you everywhere, whether it's in the community, um, at band concerts, sporting events, plays, musicals, whatever it might be. And your engagement is always there for us, and I've seen, I've seen the good and bad Josh and I both have. And just from the bottom of my heart, uh, thank you. Uh, I truly appreciate you and really look forward to this beginning of a, of a new calendar year, but midway point in second semester of a school year. So, thank you, and like everybody, give him a round of applause, please. There's a certificate there, um, from the OSBA and a little gift inside of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10 is adjournment of the organizational meeting. Now six o'clock, may we get a motion to adjourn the review meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we're gonna take a short recess and then go right back into our, uh, actual meeting. Just give us a second to make some logistical changes.
You move. I don't know.
Did you guys like it? All right, good evening you all. We are returning here for our regular meeting of the South Dakota Harris Board of Education. It is now six oh five. May we get a roll call?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. King?
Here.
Mrs. Shelby?
Here.
We can acknowledge that we did it already.
We did do the pledge fully, just after the morning committee, so rewind.
Check the camera.
But we have done that. We can go right into item two, communications, two point one, the A-1 reports from our beautiful, fabulous switcheroo.
Well, we haven't switcherooed yet.
The final report.
The final report.
Final report.
Exactly. And, and boy, is this gonna be a doozy because half of it is literally in my printer. So, and it's, it didn't print consecutive, I'd practically take it apart, so I apologize. But there is, House Bill eight, which is, many people have been discussing, contains the new Parents' Bill of Rights. OSBA wanted to make clear that while they do support parents being involved in making decisions, you know, for their children in education, that they trust, we trust, the educators and the school board to acknowledge what is the best education for... Are you talking to me or something? Oh. I used to hate when my students did that. For their stu-, their students, rather. So, that also includes a policy on parental notification on student health and well-being and instructional materials with sexually explicit content, as well as a policy on release time for religious instruction. RTRI. For the sexual content, which would be in health class generally, or sometimes in language arts, there must be something that is an alternative for students in case the parents do not want them to participate in that particular class. And it, the language that allows Board of Education to include in policy a requirement for background checks of employees and volunteers of the religious time, whatever it is, RTRI, with the district determining the manner for checks, so that the people who are instructing in whatever religious instruction, you know, students are going for during, during the school day, that those teachers are qualified to actually teach that. So I thought that was rather important. I'm having a hard time reading. HB two oh six was passed, which makes changes regarding expulsion of a student from a public school for actions that endanger the health and safety of other students or school employees. This was, there was much discussion about that. But one of the amendments is that requires public schools to include specified demographic data on expelled students and information on those expulsions in the expulsion records submitted to the Department of Education workforce. And explicitly states that a superintendent must comply with the same written notice and hearing procedure requirements for the original expulsion. And this is, I'm sorry. Kitty Heard, its fourth hearing on Senate Bill two ninety-five, which requires schools in the bottom five, and this has also been much discussed, as I'm sure you guys know, requires schools in the bottom five percent of the performing index and bottom ten percent of the progress measure for three consecutive years to choose to either close or implement an alternative to closure. Chairman Brenner announced that the committee would not be moving the, this bill, but that it would be introduced, reintroduced next year for consideration. So that's, that's a biggie, I think.
Reintroduced as of in twenty-five or twenty-six?
In this, this year, twenty-five, yeah. And then finally, I thought this was important because I've seen cars going by buses and it makes me grit my teeth. It held its first hearing on Senate Bill two thirty-three, which requires vehicle operators to watch, listen, and stop for on-track equipment that may be approaching railroad track, and also accepted an amendment to the bill folding language from the school bus, Bill's School Bus Safety Act into the bill, which changes the source of funding for the twenty-five million, for school bus safety grants. And also there's, and I can't find it right now, it's probably back in my printer. But, oh, here it is. The bill authorizes a civil penalty system related to drivers who illegally pass a school bus but cannot be identified and designate the month of October as School Bus Safety Awareness Month. No witnesses were present to testify, but as we all know, when we leave our children to go to school and they're on the road, you know, sidewalks, it's just so important that drivers are honoring the, the laws and protecting our children. So that's it.
Because they're so tiny.
What?
Like they're so short. Like if you're driving.
Exactly. Wow, and they're, yeah.
It's like, just wipe it ten seconds.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Falkenberg. And Mrs. King?
No report.
Thank you. All right, item two point two, Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everybody, community watching, Board of Education. Just have three key things I want to hit on briefly tonight. First, Eddie, Mr. Eddie Hall's enhanced, enhanced role over at Brush. This evening, I'm excited to recommend Eddie Hall for enhanced role as Associate Principal, pending your approval, this evening. Mr. Hall has been dedicated leader at Brush High School, consistent demonstrating his commitment, fostering a positive school culture and driving student success. In preparation for this role, Mr. Hall has outlined several key actions that he's ready to implement. Three of those being building a stronger school culture, plans to enhance relationships with the school, celebrate successes, and foster a welcoming, positive environment with consistent procedures and policies. Strengthening student support systems, focused on improving both academic and behavioral interventions. And the final was improving operational efficiency. He will work to streamline school processes and ensure clarity and consistency in daily operations, everything from morning arrival to dismissal and everything between bell to bell. He's been working closely with Ms. Harris and give kudos to the entire Brush staff to prepare for this transition, and his excitement for the new role is evident. He held his meetings today with each grade level. The counselors were all present, we had teachers present, YDSs. It was, it was very, I got a great report from my team that went, and really excited to see what Mr. Hall brings to this. Also on tonight's agenda is the approval for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar. This is after, we're looking at this a little different. After collaboration with the PTAs, families, staff, and students, we made some adjustments to better meet the needs of our community and families especially. Specifically, we have worked to align continuous improvement days with holidays rather than placing them randomly in the middle of the week on those random Wednesdays, which we currently have. This change aims to make planning easier for families while still allowing staff and students to benefit from these important professional development days. I do appreciate everybody's input, from the PTA presidents to the staff members, students that I've talked to, just really looking at, we didn't want to take away CID days. We wanted to continue our progress academically, socially, emotionally, and everything that we hit on, and at the same time, make it easier for families. And I, I think we're able to accomplish that, and we'll see, right? We'll see how it goes this year. And also, the third one is our January work session. I just wanted to remind everyone that our work session is scheduled for January twenty-first. While this meeting will not be broadcasted, it's still an open meeting and everyone is welcome to attend. It's not a secret, this session is part of our ongoing work with Russ Bennett from the ESC, and we will final, be finalizing our Board of Education handbook, vision, roles, and goals. This is in, this is in our process that we've been doing since October, so, or maybe it was in September. In September, when Russ came in, we didn't broadcast that one as well. So again, just wanted to remind everybody that that twenty-first, we will be doing a work session with Russ Bennett from the ESC. And I'm grateful for the time, I've already mentioned it before, but thank you again. It is Board Appreciation Month. I know it's just a month, but when you do, when you do see these ladies out and about, don't be afraid to stop and say thank you every once in a while, because they don't get to hear that very often either. And the time and the commitment that they put in is second to none. And I sit on a lot of committees for first-year superintendents through BASSA, and a lot of the trainings are on cooperation with board members, to, working with board members, to setting meetings, to having a standard, to communicating well. And when I'm going through all these, I kind of, kind of smile in my head, to be honest with you. Because I hear horror stories, I hear, I hear how bad things go and how to dodge things and how to maneuver boards, and I'm always the first one to stand up and, and express my gratitude even when you guys aren't around. So we, we understand it and we are thankful. So, that ends my report for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Kepel, we appreciate you and your team and your high.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment or? Okay. I just want to say, I have heard several teachers praising Eddie Hall and his new responsibilities and how, yeah, how well he's doing.
Awesome.
Yeah. Kind of overseeing, you know, hallways and things like that, yeah, he's just, and he's so well-respected. So that's fabulous.
Thank you, appreciate that.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll tell him to tune in at six seventeen.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
You walk into those introductions and you second guess yourself, so when the people are receptive because they see your level of positivity, I think that means a lot and it makes it a little easier as you have to go through.
Yep.
So, I appreciate that, and I appreciate them for jumping out and taking the opportunity.
Yep.
It's because opportunities are presented, don't mean people have to take them.
Yep.
So, I appreciate that as well. Mr. Hill, do we have any public comments?
None.
Hearing none, we can go right into item three, the minutes. The minutes of the regular meeting for December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four will be approved as reported or corrected. The reading of these minutes will be waived. May we get a motion to approve item three point one?
So moved.
Second.
And Ms. Falkenberg?
Yep.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item four, President's Report?
Good evening. Recommend for approval, item four point one, the financial reports for month end, December twenty twenty-four. Item four point two, the bank reconciliation for month end, December twenty twenty-four. Item four point three, the investment earnings for month end, December twenty twenty-four. Item four point four, we have one donation on there. Item four point five, the tax budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. And item four point six, recommend for approval, items four point one through four point five.
May we get a motion to approve items four point one through four point five?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Falkenberg and Mrs. Shelby, any questions or comments?
The one thing I'll point out is, just like first of the year, everything else, the tax budget is a one-time-a-year thing, and they do it six months ahead of time for the county auditor's office, so they can prep and, and that's kind of like the first step towards their end of tax planning, budgeting season effective July first for their end too. They run in a calendar year, but they also track it in a fiscal year for us.
Perfect. Thank you for that information.
My comment would be just a thank you to progressive.
Yep.
That's fantastic.
I was waiting for Catherine.
I know. I was gonna, but.
She's giving me a loop here. Thank you for pointing that out.
Absolutely.
We do appreciate all the donations that people choose to give to our district, because you could donate to a lot of places, and for people to choose us is a sense of great compassion. Hearing no further questions or comments, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Um, item. I need to go to one side. The other one is the other side.
Under five, certified personnel, seeking the approval, well, we have, you'll see some appointments, of retirement, paid leave, and two paid leave of absences. Seeking the approval for five point one certified staff.
May we get a motion to approve five point one?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Falkenberg and Mrs. King, any questions or comments?
Just nice to see Barb Cuman willing to come back and, and tutor. That's great.
Yeah, and she was a, she was a huge help the first, well, not semester, but first, at least quarter, quarter and a half. She was a long-term sub for us, too.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, and then she just rolled right into the tutor position.
That's great.
She's been great. No.
I wanted to add, Kristy Myers has been such an asset for this district. The CCP program is just, I guess that's her baby because she has just helped us so much as parents get through it. So, she'll be greatly missed.
Thank you.
She was definitely, she's been around, been around since the beginning, Ms. Myers.
Yeah.
And Otis is twenty-eight, and he was in her office.
Oh, wow.
With her. And don't write herself a sentence or anything when he graduated from high school. So I appreciate, she's always had the drive to deal with the kids. She's been through a plethora of generations of kids, and the kids and the families have changed, and she tried her best to stay right in there on the ground, and so I appreciate her, and hopefully she'll enjoy retirement. Don't miss us too bad. May we get a roll call for five point?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item six.
Under six, six point one, non-rep staff, seeking their approval for the change of assignment for Eddie Hall.
May we get a motion to approve item six point one?
So moved. Second.
And Shelby, Mrs. Shelby and Ms. Falkenberg? Any questions or comments? May we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Item seven?
Under seven, seven point one, classified staff, seeking the approval. We have a couple of new appointments, as well as a change of assignment, paid leave of absence, unpaid leave of absence, and ratification of two resignations.
Motion to approve item seven point one?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Falkenberg and Mrs. King, I know you're talking about Mr. Mathis. Like, are you serious? We leave from the classroom to the.
What'd you just say, we can't, educators can't get rid of?
Educators love being around educations.
A few of the te-, the male teachers have made comments about math school there in the hallway.
Speak soon, Ms. Falkenberg, tell them things.
Now, we are, I will say, Mrs., feel free to, feel free to jump in. This is the first time we've seen this happen, where a teacher came back in this role.
Yeah.
And I was talking to Mr. Wiley yesterday, and he said two things I recognized to him, just how excited the kids were.
To see math.
To see him, and how quickly the order came when they, when they did see him. So he's got that unique touch, where the, the respect is there, and at the same time, they, they trust him and have a love for him, so.
That's great.
We're excited to see what happens.
What?
May we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item eight?
Under eight supplemental contracts, seeking the approval for two supplementals. We have an assistant baseball coach and academic achievement club at Memorial, as well as one unpaid volunteer.
May we get a motion to approve item eight point one?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Falkenberg and Mrs. King, any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Hearing none?
Nothing under business to me.
Item ten?
Under ten, curriculum instruction, seeking the approval for ten point one, dealing with non-subcontracts, and ten point two, as is discussed in my superintendent update, the revised twenty-five, twenty-six calendar.
May we get a motion to approve ten point one and ten point two?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Falkenberg, any questions or comments?
Just one comment, and we will get that posted tomorrow, on the website as well. The calendar for families, as they plan ahead, trying to get that done a little earlier for families.
That was my question.
Hearing no other questions or comments, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Item thirteen, Board of Education, thirteen point one, do we have any information that we want to release for? I do have your city council calendar.
Do you?
I figure out for the city from this map, so. So I do have that ready to go. Erin did take January, and we all seen her message. I have, I'm slotted for February. Ashley, March.
Ooh, a new month.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I'll be in town.
Catherine, April.
Oh, okay.
Josh is gonna take May, potentially for the financial briefing. I figured I'd just show up with you as well, so you won't have to do by yourself again. Crystal, June. Erin, July. No meeting in August, I'll send it tonight, I'll find it after I, it's like a little early, I was trying to add my phone until it's already sent, but no. I'll take September, Ashley, October. That is also the month, Ashley, that Josh is gonna be there for financials.
Okay.
And because of the October holiday, you can see they put it for Tuesday. If you can't go, I'll go with him on a morning.
Okay.
So we'll just keep focusing when we get there. November, Catherine. And as I was mentioning before with Capitol Conference, it got, fall in the way of that.
Okay.
We fell into the same week with Capitol Conference, but with that new, um, change, it should be okay. It'll put us at like November third and November tenth, the council meetings. And then December, Crystal, you know, closed on.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll send it in, if it's any changes, like you guys go through some schedules and we'll just talk it out.
Okay.
Um, I don't think we have any other information. Anybody, Alan, about any say?
I wanted to just say, as a sad bit of information, but one of our former teachers, he taught at our tech for several years, Matt Rutkowski, just a great, great guy. Really loved the students and the students loved him. On December twenty-seventh, he was out cutting branches in his backyard, and a branch killed, hit him and killed him. So he leaves a wife and two daughters, and, and just, it's pretty devastating.
And those used to his family, in our family.
I don't have, yeah, I don't have his address yet, but I can get it.
I don't think we have any, you know, unfinished business. Thirteen point three, revisions to the Olaswell Section four fifty-seven plan. South Dakota Harris Board of Education approves the revisions to the Olaswell Section four fifty-seven plan. May we get a motion to approve item thirteen point three?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Shelby and Mrs. King? Any questions or comments?
This, just to give you some clarity on this, this is when we did some updates to our annuity language in both me and Dom's contracts, we included the four fifty-sevens, which hadn't previously been in there. When we did that, it didn't necessarily align with the actual four fifty-seven plan through Olaswell that we were in, even though we were investing it. It kind of didn't make sense, so it's more of like an updating thing. This is updating it so everything falls in line, so.
Thank you for that, Mr. Hill. Any questions or comments for the, hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
I don't believe we have any further public comment.
No.
No? Um, we did have any for executive session, but I don't want to do it without Erin. She has the notes and stuff, I'm sorry, you probably don't really still think it for that, do you?
I asked someone to bring my laptop. Never mind.
Yes. So, never mind. Uh, she has the notes, and after, with this meeting, I want to give her a chance to get those together, and then. She has the notes, and after, with this, I want to give her a chance to get those together, and then, sorry, we'll get that.
We're still, we're still, we're only are, so.
I don't want to.
We can get, we can get that done, and I don't want to do it without her. With that being said, may we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Six thirty-one?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all for joining us, and we will see you in February.
Wait.